All set.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting today, Tuesday, December 19th, 2023, our last meeting of this year. And if we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So I'd like to begin by just checking, are there any changes or adjustments to today's agenda? Any changes or adjustments? Seeing or hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support to approve our agenda as written. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to our public comment period, an opportunity for citizens to appear before the county board, and you're welcome to address the board on any matter of county concern. Is there anyone in the audience today that would like to speak? Anyone who would like to speak? Are there any written comments that have been received?
Madam Chair, I did receive an email that the sender requested be read in this meeting. It does pertain to a commissioner who's not here today. I would respectfully recommend that we table this until the January 9th regular business meeting.
All right. Thank you so much. Any other comments? All right. At this point, then, we will move on to our consent agenda. And are there any items a commissioner wishes to pull? We have five items on the consent agenda today. Seeing or hearing none, is there a motion to approve our consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We now have some items brought forward by Land Services, and we have Neva Maxwell here today with us. Good morning, Neva.
Morning.
So our first item is the Flintlock Range Association Conditional Use Permit. This was recommended to be brought before the county board at last week's Planning Commission meeting. And Neva, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. Last week, the Planning Commission held the public hearing for the Flintlock Sports Park range, shooting range. There were some people in attendance to speak during the public hearing. There were property owners nearby that were opposed to the shooting range, primarily due to noise concerns, but also associated with the road use. And then there was an individual present in favor of the shooting range. The Planning Commission ultimately reviewed all the facts of the case, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval with conditions. This morning, I had some discussions with the project proposer, the president of the Flintlock Sports Range Association, Justin Rexroad. And he indicated to me that one of our conditions of approval might be problematic for the Sheriff's Department. One of the purposes of this range is provide law enforcement a safe space to do their shooting trials and different professional requirements. And he indicated to me that the Sheriff's Department might need some low-light shooting options, and the hours of approval might not allow for that. So we kind of had a tight timeline here to get this on your agenda. We're trying to accommodate schedules. So we just haven't had enough time yet to really research to see whether or not this condition might be an issue for the Sheriff's Department. So instead of what my item initially recommended is that you adopt the findings of the Planning Commission and approve this conditional use permit, it might be wise to take a little bit of time here and recommend to send this back to the Planning Commission for the Planning Commission to reevaluate this condition with more help from the Sheriff's Department and also researching the statute. We just don't want to, you know, have this conditional use permit go through and then find out that the two to four times a year that the Sheriff's Department needs low-light shooting hours, that it doesn't work for those hours. And also be really respectful of the landowners that were opposed to this request, since they were really concerned about shooting hours. And if we state that the shooting hour is from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and then the sheriff's office is out there shooting outside of those hours, it's just not really a good practice. So January 10th is the next Planning Commission meeting, so we could have this on their agenda as an old business item and also have further assistance from Attorney Hicken and myself and Pat Eliasen, Sheriff, to better, you know, clear up the details about this item.
Attorney Hicken.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to add a little bit of information as you consider the request to table this agenda item. It's also been my intent to have the final version of the lease in place at or before the time that the board considers the CUP. The applicant, as the Shooting Range Association, with the property owner being the county, the applicant hasn't actually established a property right on that parcel at all until we have a lease established. So it's important that we have all of the loose ends associated with the lease tied up and have that lease language in front of the commissioners first and approved prior to the CUP. And so I apologize to Neva, because I also made a request to her this morning to please delay this until January. Now, we're also exploring the issue that the sheriff may have with his training requirements, because it's always been contemplated that this shooting range would be a public range, but also available to all the law enforcement agencies for their training requirements. If it's not truly an issue with the current language, I'd like for us to be able to address this maybe at the January 9th regular meeting of the board, because I know the Shooting Range Association is, you know, wanting to move forward and want to respect their timelines, too.
All right. Well, that makes sense. Any discussion that commissioners have? Any questions? I guess I would like to recommend that we table this item till January, and we recommend it goes back to the Planning Commission for a review of the hours, given concerns about low-light shooting by the law enforcement center. Is there a second to that motion? Thank you, Commissioner Starley. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Back to the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Surprises sometimes happen, so.
All right, we'll move on to our Cook County zoning ordinance amendment proposal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Over the last two years, as the Planning and Zoning Administrator, I've been working with our zoning ordinance, and there's been some housekeeping items I've had on my to-do list, just little mistakes here and there. So these are really ordinance amendments that are just meant to clean up our zoning ordinance, so it's more user-friendly for everybody. I did publicly notice this in the Cook County News-Herald. I did not receive any written comments. There was nobody in person at the public hearing to comment on this. There's really no substantive changes specifically in here, so the Planning Commission did recommend unanimous approval of these changes. I'll go through them briefly here. So there are just some outdated terms in this zoning ordinance that suggest that male identifying individuals would be county attorneys or auditors or planning and zoning administrators and even property owners. So I would just like to be a little bit more inclusive and updated about that change in society. Also, the lots of record date is May 1st, 1984. This is something that we as staff have always used as a date, but it's not actually written in our zoning ordinance. So we always have realtors and surveyors and property owners asking us, what is this date? So I would just like to put the date in the zoning ordinance, so we don't have to keep answering that question for people. Our shore impact zone is a little bit more of a visualization reference so that people understand what the shore impact zone means. So I included a graphic from the DNR to help property owners understand what shore impact zone means. Potentially, the most substantive change is the top of bluff definition, which really is intended to be more reflective of how our staff have been making this determination on site. And in working with a local surveyor, we decided just to recommend that we just change this definition to be more user-friendly. When we determine a top of bluff, we're really looking for that break in the slope that property owners and surveyors and everyday people can look at a property and see, oh, we're walking horizontally, and all of a sudden, okay, we're going downhill. Well, that's the top of bluff. So our original definition was per the DNR requirements, but it's just very calculated and yucky. So that is the recommendation for the new definition. That should be easier for people. Otherwise, it's just kind of updating some table of contents, some true mistakes in the word of minimum versus maximum for lot coverage. It would be silly to have a minimum lot coverage of 50%. And I did verify in an earlier version of the zoning ordinance that that actually was supposed to read maximum, so just mistakes. I think that's about it. There's just kind of been a longstanding agreement, as Tim has indicated to me, that Planning and Zoning Administrators do sometimes bring these changes to the Planning Commission and the county board's attention. So we added in that clarification of the people who do bring these changes forward. And I think that's about it. Again, no comments and unanimous recommendation for approval for these housekeeping items.
Any questions or comments for Neva? I just appreciate you working on this, and we'll be happy to note that you can check something off your to-do list.
Feels so good this time of year.
All right. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the amendment, the resolution to the amendment of the Cook County zoning ordinance.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Starley. Is there support?
I'll second that.
Thank you so much, Commissioner White. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, and on to Temperance Trails and Tofti.
Yes, so last week, the Planning Commission reviewed the conditional use permit application for the planned unit development. This would be a development for 22 residential units. It's on the property that's just on the backside of Birch Grove Community School in Tofti. We did all the public noticing through our conditional use processing. I just also want to clarify, some of my documents through the conditional use permit suggests this is an HRA conditional use. Wanted to clarify that the HRA is the landowner, but the application is actually from Pete Grubish with Precision Built Homes. So he is the one applying for the conditional use. And then once the project and the plating process have been completed, then the HRA will transfer that land over. This is a mix of single-family homes and then twin homes or like condo-type units. One thing that was made clearer in the Planning Commission meeting is that 25% of these homes are supposed to be at market rate or entry-level housing, which is supposed to be $290,000 or less. So that's the reason that six of the units or so are going to be more of those townhomes or twin-home type styles. One thing that Mr. Grubish explained in the Planning Commission hearing is that there is still some potential for this layout between single-family homes and twin-style homes to change depending on the market demands. They're going to be building kind of one unit at a time as people purchase them. But they're not going to change like the density allowances of the planned unit development. So just kind of a little bit of a caveat about that. There was an individual from Tofti who was present to speak. She wasn't opposed to the request. She just had questions about lighting and speed of traffic, those sort of things. Let's see, I think there was also Steve Persson's. He was present to speak with questions about the septic system. The idea of this development is that all the infrastructure and utilities will go in first, and then kind of one house at a time will go in as purchased, like I mentioned before. There were discussions about like what the feel of the property will be. They want, the Planning Commission wanted like a Northwoods feel and not like a Twin Cities subdivision where everything gets cleared out. There was not really a way to condition a Northwoods feel. So it was more so just kind of relaying that message to the developer and also recognizing that sometimes the market will naturally demand that sort of thing, so. Yeah, there was really good discussion by the Planning Commission. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have and go from there.
Commissioner White.
I have a question where it says, Mr. Hale also added that the school has a campsite on the north side of the property. Yes. I just question, the school will be allowing the public to use their land as a campsite?
I, you want?
I don't know who answers that.
I, yeah, well, you'll hear it from the horse's mouth. Thank you, Jason. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am the horse, and my mouth is going to tell you that the Commissioner White's referencing, there's a sort of a, it's kind of a camp, it's not a campground, but it's like a little campsite that the Birch Grove School built for their, for education purposes for their students. And they, there's a little trail from the school that goes up there, and I think there's a campfire and there's a couple of benches.
There's a fire ring.
Yeah, yeah. And actually, I just, I'm working right now with a surveyor to establish an easement for the school in favor of the school so that the kids and the students can go up there and still use that as part of their programming. So the HRA is going to establish that before we would close or convey the property to make sure that goes with the land.
Okay, so it's school, outdoor education?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm assuming, I haven't attended, but I'm assuming that's what the purpose of the school.
You might not have enough criteria to allow you into that class.
I think that's correct.
Commissioner Starley.
I'll verify that. It is a little nature area that the children go to, and we do different projects at times. Not, you know, every week, just periodically. Sure.
Well, it's very nice that the HRA is going to allow that to continue. It's very much appreciated. Any other questions, Commissioner Starley?
Thank you. I just have a comment, and Jason can probably verify it, but when folks buy their place and they understand that this is not going to be a short-term rental, will they be signing something that says to that effect, or how will this be promoted?
Commissioner Starley and Chair, I don't know that it'll be promoted. We made clear as part of the marketing material that this is a long-term residential use development, and it will be in, actually, the HRA attorney right now is drafting the deed with restrictions that prohibits explicitly short-term rental use for commercial purposes. And it will also be a requirement in the bylaws so that when they purchase the property, anytime you buy an HOA property, you have to, the seller has to send you the bylaws in advance. You have time to review those. So we'll have basically two forms, two mechanisms to do that. In addition to that, the county has to issue, presuming that the person who would want to do short-term rental was wanting to be a law-abiding citizen, they would have to request a permit from the county, and the county would say, no, you can't, because it's not allowed in that development. So there are really sort of three gatekeeping mechanisms.
Thank you on that clarification.
Other questions? If not, I entertain a motion. Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate it.
All right. We'll move on to item five, human resources, and we have Allison Plummer with us this morning. Good morning, Allison.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
All right, today I bring forth a recommendation for approval to approve our drafted Earn Sick and Safe Time policy. So per some legislative changes that occurred in 2023, employers of more than one employee, starting January 1st of 2024, are required to provide this new leave specifically for sick and safe time. I did include the policy in the packet for your review. Again, this is mandated that we have this in place by January 1st. So looking for either questions or approvals so we can continue on in preparing this to roll out with our staff and supervisors and get that knowledge piece out before January 1st.
So maybe, Allison, if you could highlight, what are the significant changes? And I don't believe there are but a couple between our previous policy and this new policy.
Great question. So we will still have in place our current paid leave policy. That is applicable and remains applicable to all regular staff, full-time, part-time. So the Earn Sick and Safe Time policy is really going to be a complement to that policy for those that are not currently eligible for our paid leave policy. So thank our seasonal workers, our temp workers, people who are not considered or don't fall into that regular employment category. So our current paid leave policy is really generous. It's very broad. You accrue leave and can use it really for any reason. But then around the state, that leaves people who potentially have not been accruing any type of paid leave and may find it difficult to take time off, especially if they have to take unpaid leave for specific situations like they are sick, especially when you think COVID, flu season, everything like that, or potentially other reasons, in this case for safe time, which may be people who've experienced domestic violence, domestic assault, sexual assault, and they need that time off from work. So this policy statewide will allow paid time off accrual for those specific reasons for against staff, and in our case, our seasonal temp staff that have not been eligible to accrue any type of paid leave. So our current paid leave policy will not be impacted by it per state statute. The, our current paid leave policy, in essence, trumps the Earn Sick and Safe, Earned Sick, it's a tongue twister, Earn Sick and Safe Time policy, because it's a more generous policy that we already have in place. So that will remain untouched, unimpacted. We're just bringing in this other, like secondary policy to complement that for our non-regular staff. The accrual rate is a little less, so those temp staff will, or eligible staff for this policy will accrue one hour for every 30 hours worked, and they'll max out at about 48, I think the policy is 48 hours. So all of the guidelines and the policy that we're adopting are the, is what is written in the state statute, starting January 1st of 2024. So we are following all of the language pretty much to the T in terms of that accrual maximum rates carryover, the application, and so forth.
Commissioner White.
And so, did you just say that they will roll over from here to here?
They will.
Okay.
Yes, they will not, it's not a use it or lose that kind of situation.
Other questions? Commissioner Hawkins.
So does our payroll department, we've got this in place to track this now? Did we get that taken?
Great question. Yes, so Brady and Nick, we've been involved in communications during this whole drafting process and even up to a couple months before, at least when I started. I don't know what happened prior to that. But they're definitely aware of the policy, working with MSIS, was RT Vision for E-Time. And we're actually meeting, I'm meeting with Brady and Nick tomorrow to go over the final policy and check on how it's set up in the system. So yes, so we're still in the process there, definitely in the loop, because part of the requirements in state statute is obviously that employer, employee notice aspect of it that will have to be listed not only in E-Time so people can use it, the applicable employees can use it, but it will also need to be included on the pay stub, just like we see with our paid leave, this is what you've accrued, this is what you've used, this is your balance. It will have to be set up very similarly to that as well.
I have a question. I assume that all the counties have to do this, so.
Yes.
I just want to make sure we're ready to go on day one.
Yeah. And MSIS, that's our computer joint powers group. They've been working on this for months since it, since it actually came into being. So they've got all the software done, and it's just a process around that, so.
There's a great deal of discussion at AMC back in early December. There was a session on sick time, and all the counties are ready to roll, so. Other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll so move.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work on this. All right, Auditor Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request to approve the Cook County Grand Marais Economic Development Authority's final budget and levy for 2024. We approved their proposed levy back in September, along with ours and all others, but as with all taxing authorities, there has to be a final approval of that levy before the end of December. So as you can see, their request is for $490,720, which the same as was approved in September. They have one difference in special taxing districts like EDA. They, literally, you could, you could increase theirs. You cannot increase ours or city or et cetera. So it is possible to go that direction also, but that's not what they're asking today. And just looking at their report, there you can see it's a large increase compared to last year. And some of that was, I think there was some, their request last year was for $355,000, and there, but there was some confusion at that time, and it got approved at $295,000. So that accounts for a lot of that increase. And just, I just did some, look at their, the history. I've kept the history of the EDA's levy. And just going back a few years to 2017, the average increase up to $490,000, the average increase from 2017 to now would be about 300 and a half, 3.5% per year. If you go way back, it's a larger percentage, but after the Great Recession, et cetera, they caught up and started having larger levies. And since that date, it's been rather moderate for the last several years.
Any questions for Auditor Powers? Or I see Teresa is out there.
Yeah, Teresa Bida is here, too, to answer specific questions on their budget.
Any questions? Commissioner Hawkins.
Yes, I would like, Teresa, if you were willing to come forward and talk about this budget, because I've been attending EDA meetings for quite a while now, and I am so excited to have Teresa on board. We've had some conversations about the work of the EDA, and I'm really excited to see what's going to happen. And I'm wondering if you, this is a large increase. The public is not quite aware, I believe, of why this budget is necessary. And I'm wondering if you can speak to what your plans are for the next year or why we, why some of these things got included this year that haven't been there before.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioners. Thanks for having me. As, and bear with me, I'm getting acquainted having started in September. But some of the larger increases, I think in 2023 and previous years, there wasn't a lot of itemization. Board per diem, for example, that's a new item on there because they weren't tracking that year over year. There's also an increase in operations. That is for true cost of our state audit, some website support, a rent increase, an insurance increase, and then that itemized board per diem. So that accounts for roughly $10,820 of an increase on the operations bracket. Under office expenses, the, that category has roughly a $3,100 increase. That is accounting for some new supplies and equipment as I onboard myself and in the office, and then cleaning and office tools, like some IT now being itemized. Under staff expenses, you'll see $25,800 that the EDA board is requesting an increase. That accounts for the hope that there will be a staff support position, so a part-time staffer that could look like an EDA position. It could be another partnership with Northland Foundation, similar to what we do with Pat Campanaro. Or it could be just, you know, third-party professional services coming in and doing a strategic plan with the stakeholders and the EDA board in 2024, which we've never done before. So that's exciting. Under financial obligations, just a little bit more itemization. Last year, we did not get the, there was a little bit of confusion there, I think, the $295,000 to the $355,000 ask. We do the $60,000 as a pass-through to pay the City of Grand Marais' bond obligation for the special assessments. And then we also have, for any remaining lots, we pay the special assessments on those. So if you were to look into 2024 right now, we'd be at roughly $11,000 on lots that we own that we'd be paying special assessments on in addition to that $60,000 pass-through. And then the Business Development Fund is a significant in- And then the Business Development Fund is a significant increase. The EDA board put that up $90,000. I think if you look at the last two years for COVID, and the EDA being very helpful in facilitating some of the, the COVID relief, the TAB loans, Takanaite Area Business Relief Loan, some of the CARES Act funding, there certainly is a demand out there for our existing business owners, those that are looking to expand, new startups, and so the Business Development Fund has always been a resource for that to leverage, whether it be expansions, new technology. In 2023, we did quite a bit with the HRA to help support some of the pre-development costs, which are kind of the first dollars in, but very risky, so to leverage some housing developments. There was a grant for a new childcare startup, Sabo Village, Birchwood Apartments, and so we'll definitely be looking at 2024 as we do that strategic plan to make sure that the Business Development Fund policy matches kind of our strategic goals and how we leverage those resources. So, yeah.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. And I, no, I have sometimes been maybe rather critical of the EDA budget. I want to say thank you for the itemization.
Yeah.
Thanks to Mark Shackleton. I, he's really done a lot of work on making sure that the financial statements are clearer and more understandable for the public, and I am very excited about moving forward and the projects that potentially could be happening in the next few years. So, thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments for Teresa? All right, well, if not, I would entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the final levy for the EDA 2024 budget levy.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. Is there support? Thank you, Commissioner Storley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much, Teresa, we appreciate your work.
Thank you.
All right, on to item seven, Administrator Yorki.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. The item regarding the appointment to the ARDC board was on your November 14th agendas and information item. The reason it's back on today is that ARDC has requested that the board take action on this, and that we notify them about the appointment prior to the end of the month. And so the recommendation today is to appoint Commissioner Storley to serve a new three-year term on the ARDC commission and board.
Any questions?
I will move that.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Hawkins.
I'll second.
Is there support? Thank you, Commissioner White. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Commissioner Storley. All right, on to our updates.
All right. The, the next thing that I wanted to update you all on is that Brady and I have been talking with Ellers about the bonding issuance that, that we're planning for the first part of next year, and I just wanted to update you on the, the scope of that and also the timing. So currently, what we're planning to do is to use a combination of capital improvement plan bonding, abatement bonding, and law enforcement bonds to, to do the first bond issuance, which we plan to have a public hearing on. Let's see, I think it's going to be January 23rd. And so each of these bonding authorities has different public notice requirements. So CIP bonding is a 14-day notice period, the abatement bonds have a 10-day notice period, and then the law enforcement bonds have no notice requirement, which makes perfect sense if you think about it, or if you don't think about it, actually. So, so what we're going to be doing is getting a notice in the News Herald two weeks prior to that hearing. So that would be, I believe, on January 6th. And then in order for you all to get a good idea of exactly what's included in this bond issuance, we're going to have Bruce Kimmel from Ellers visit with us on Tuesday, January 16th, to talk about how this bond issuance is structured, and to talk about why we're doing it the way that we're doing it, and to answer questions about, about the purpose of the bonds. So it is, it is for a couple of different things. One is to provide funding for the initial project, projects in the capital improvement plan, and then also there is funding in there for architectural services related to the judicial center that we're going to be starting in the first part of '24. And so Bruce will, every time I talk with him, I learn more about how this all works, but I'm still a rank amateur. But Bruce will be available on the 16th to talk about, about the bonding proposal, and then we will have the hearing on the 23rd. So that's, that's where we are on that. And Brady, is there anything that you'd like to, to add to that?
No, not really. That's, pretty much covers it.
Other items?
I have a question.
Commissioner.
I, James, you said the initial CIP, is that deferred maintenance?
Correct.
Okay, and what is the amount, what is the amount, that, is it still $4 million that might be bonded for, to get us started?
It's approximately $4 million. Like 4.1.
Yeah, 4.165 is what, is what's planned, and that includes that professional services.
Yes, I understand.
Yeah.
How much are we expecting for the architectural services out of that 4.165?
That's estimated to be about 1.3.
Yeah, 1.4 maybe, yeah.
1.4.
And, oh.
Commissioner White.
We need a project manager, and is that another, there's an RFP out for that?
Correct. Those proposals are due by the end of the week.
And what is the, do we have any estimates as to how much that will be, or how anyone will, oh, never mind, you don't, you don't have to guess on that, that's just what I So this bonding would be for the, for the deferred maintenance, for blueprints, for the Justice Center, and then for a project manager, for two positions, okay?
Other questions? All right, other updates?
That's all I have.
All right. We'll move on to Commissioner updates. Commissioner Hawkins?
Um, I guess I don't have anything for this.
It's been kind of a short time period between meetings, that's for sure. Commissioner White?
The other one, yeah.
Um, I was at the, along with Commissioner Storley, at the Colville Town Hall meeting to discuss the Colville and Hovland Town Hall's future, and what some of the recommendations were on the report from the consultants, what was, and there were, if you, if you look at the reports where they say, like, for the Colville Town Hall, that the one item is recommended, that it will require $51,000 for the interior walls. Now, I've looked, I don't have access to what are you putting on the walls, what are you doing with the walls, what does this code mean? I have asked Administrator Yorki to see if he could find out this information. I know that, I have been informed that I don't have the authority to speak directly to these consultants to get an answer. I don't understand why legally, but, but that, that information has been requested, James, for months, and it was a real issue at this meeting that I didn't have that information. People wanted to know. It was a very, we could say, robust or raucous meeting. There was a lot of opportunities for, that some people took the opportunities to vent their frustrations at how, the lack of transparency, their perception of lack of transparency on how all of this is going on. There was discussion, not only from me, but also from others that said two things. One, as a voter or as a property owner, everyone has a responsibility to try to find the information. But then others was like, what the county board has been doing to try to get information out is not enough for many people in the county, because they do not, well, one, they don't have the time or energies to come to board meetings during the course of a workday. So the question was, couldn't there be a different time, maybe particularly if there is a, like when the capital improvement plan was big on the agenda initially, to have a meeting at a different time, rather than in the morning? Could it be later, like at 5:00 or 6:00, or some other time, so more people could attend? Whether or not they would, don't know. But we had 40 people that attended this town hall meeting, and I know it wasn't just because they were going to get cinnamon rolls. They came, they wanted information, and it was a really good, interactive conversation among the people that were there. Most of them were, many of them were from Hovland, there were quite a few from Colville. And looking at the list, the, the conversation focus, we tried to, I, Arvis Thompson was also trying to get information, she was leading also, but tried to focus on the town halls. And looking at the list of the recommendations for improvements, repairs on the Colville Town Hall specifically, three, three items were identified by this particular group in, unanimously, that these particular items should be addressed first. Like, where $20,000 for office equipment, that was a real question that we really would like an answer to, because there is no office at the Colville Town Hall, and what does that mean? It's just the question, like, what does this all mean? And there was nobody there that could answer that question, nobody. So there was a lot of frustrations there, and I did explain that neither, that Commissioner, Commissioner Sullivan was unable to attend, attend, but the intention is that there'll be another meeting that you will lead with more information that you've been gathering for this. And so I thought it was a good conversation. The accomplishments was that maybe a better understanding of, of everyone's need to listen or participate for the communications, but also what came up was ways to mitigate some of the communications deficits as far as the east end of the county, and that there would be postings, Hovland Town Hall emails, I mean, we have this email bank, and you'll be getting that to Commissioner Sullivan, but that, to write up information and send it to the households that have the emails there, so they will know that this is happening. The opportunity for them to actually come and participate probably wouldn't happen, but they would at least have another way of knowing what's going on. But the one thing was the, a number of people stated that they knew it was happening because they saw the little sign on the, on the window at the Hovland Post Office, that there would be a community meeting. And so for the east end of the county, there's a real reliance on seeing it, and then seeing it old school, not with the electronics, because honestly, the east end of the county, we often get these power outages that screw everything up, even if your printer worked two minutes ago, that doesn't work, even if you have, everything goes awry, and emails get lost too. So that is, is something that I made a commitment to, that I will get information to those people, and I will be putting up paper posters. Perhaps the other places would be like, for people that live in the Colville area coming this way and don't get their mail, is that, that would happen, put them up in the grocery stores, when people enter the Johnson's Grocery Store, and just some of the old school, maybe at a laundromat or something, but, but just so people would be aware of what was going on. So as far as I, as a commissioner, am concerned, this is the way that I will be able to communicate most effectively with the people from District 1. However, I, I don't have the answers, and so to do that, I need to have the people that have the answers come. However, I understand, I don't have the authority to ask people to attend these town hall meetings either, that it's not my place to do that. So, kind of at a rock and a hard place, but that's, that was communicated to me. So town hall meetings will continue to go forward on the east end, and we, and I will do my best to get accurate information out as best I can, and I will, made a promise to feed everyone every time they come, but also, as long as people come and we have valid productive conversations, this is what the east end will be doing.
Okay, so, well, thank you. Commissioner Hawkins?
Yeah, I just want to respond to something. It made me think, as far as communication to the public, I personally, and my, have signed up through Civic website for email notifications of certain agendas. I don't remember when I did that, but it's prior to me becoming a commissioner. And I'm looking here now, just dawn on me, how do I get that? Because I get Public Health and Human Services, and I get the Planning Commission to my personal account because I signed up some time ago. And maybe we need to, to just let the public know. I get, we're all busy, and they, for some reason, don't think about us as much as we think about them. But just a reminder that you can get somehow a notification to remind you, hey, check out what the county's doing.
Right. And so, Commissioner, are you asking specifically about the town hall meeting on the calendar, or?
Or, I don't know how, because I don't get every update on my personal, I don't, I must have signed up sometime for something, and I don't remember doing it, and maybe we should have a refresher course of how we did that and put it out there.
So, I mean, regarding the town hall meeting, so I remember, Commissioner White, you're talking about hosting this meeting.
Yes.
But after you did that in the meeting, we didn't have any further conversation about it. And so, I mean, if you want, I guess typically, I don't know if we've hosted meetings like that. If it's, if it's something where like a commissioner, a, a single commissioner is hosting a meeting, I don't know if those have typically been on the calendar.
They typically, well, the way I would look at it is, and I shared this with Deb when we were talking about the meeting, it's a lot like the Lake Association, and it's a group of people, there are a community of people, they see themselves as a community, but those aren't posted on our website. But I think what would be helpful in the future is if, because the town halls are in District 4 and District 1, so if Deb and I could establish those dates collaboratively, we could both be there. And, you know, I think that would be the way to go.
And no, it does not have to be, I, I believe it, it is a community, it, it is specific to District 1, that, the town hall will be specific to, to that district, so to have it, advertisement would be in a different format than on the county website.
So I guess, Madam Chair, if I could, so I, I just have a question about process and expectations. So if, if we start a process of seeking resident input on the implementation of the CIP, is it just about the town halls? Is it about all projects and all buildings? And if so, what is the process for getting that input? I mean, basically, what we're talking about is having residents micromanage the implementation of the CIP, which I don't see as productive, but, you know, if the board were to decide that that's what we, that you want to do, then we'd need to have a process for that, and it would add significantly to the. want to do, then we'd need a process for that, and it would add significantly to the time needed.
All time and plans.
So I'm curious about the endgame.
And I guess my discussion about town halls came up as to whether if people didn't like the CIP that was developed, the option is you could form a township. So you could form a township, and then the town halls could be purchased. So that's the angle with which I was coming at it, not that there would be any change in the CIP.
And I did explain that. Nothing will happen on any buildings, and I didn't have the answers, but we need to have a project manager hired who will be overseeing the buildings and the improvements in the buildings. And so the town halls are just a little piece of the 25, of the 25. I could probably do the math, but not as fast as the percentage. But, and so it's just a part of it, and it's part of the process. And so if... I don't know. I just know that this was a... There were the roof, I don't, off the top of my head, the roof on the Colville Town Hall and a railing on the front steps that it hasn't had, and one thing that's a true liability issue for the county, were two of the items that would be hoped to be addressed immediately. According to the consultants, 2023 was the year that those things would have been addressed. So it didn't happen. So anyway, I did not... I don't think... I hope that I got the message across, or it was understood, that the town halls are just a part of the entire capital improvement plan of the deferred maintenance. And so there's a lot of passion about these town halls and a lot of questions about what materials. If you look at the consultants, when they put out, these are the amounts that will be needed to improve, fix, correct these town halls. Who set the standard? Well, number one, what materials are being suggested for use? So what are the... And why? What is your standard that you're trying to bring the buildings up to? And then there was a real discrepancy. If you're going to put $51,000 into the interior panel, wainscoted walls in the Colville Town Hall, but then it's $12,000 for the leaking roof, you won't fix a roof for $12,000, not one that has as many valleys and four years of moisture damage, which will require checking underneath those shingles to see what the substrate is. So the numbers don't really jive with what reality might be. And the question was specifically, what are the materials that are being suggested, and where did the consultants come up with a number of $20,000 for office equipment? And these are just questions.
So those are things that we'll work on, and we can come back and talk to the town halls with... Yeah.
Yeah.
By the way, Commissioner, I have requested a key to the codes that are... And I did. I mean, regarding your comment about lack of transparency, I've been totally transparent about all of this. In the process to develop the plan was transparent. It involved a lot of community input. So, but as far as the information that you handed out at the meeting that Jana printed for you, I requested a key to those project codes from CRBPS, and I've not received that yet. But as soon as I get it, I will provide it.
Would it come with our... I know our contract with them starts January 1st, so my guess would be...
Well, I mean, they should be able to provide that before the contract.
Okay, great. And that's something we can distribute, too. All right. Thank you.
Yes. Sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to try to provide an answer to Commissioner Hawkins' question about how did I, or how do we, how do citizens get connected and get these email updates? It's easy to do. You go to the County website, go to boards and commissions, and then you're on essentially our, what we call Civic web, and there's a section called E Updates. And it's just a matter of, like, checking a box. I want the airport commission agenda. I want the regular board meeting agenda, and then you'll get, when those are published, you get notice, you get a link to click, something like that.
Thank you.
And how do we get that information out?
Well, I mean, we could...
Put it on the board.
Yeah, I mean, put it on the website. I don't know. We could talk to Todd.
That's my thought. We would talk to Todd and see what he would recommend.
Right. Well, because I'm thinking, I need it on a little poster.
Yeah, it was the same thing.
I need to get it in writings, and it's like, with little handouts, take this home and sit at your computer, and this is how you can do it.
I found it here. You could take a picture and then draw an arrow. This is where you go.
There you go. Thank you, and I'm glad there was good attendance. That's great.
Oh, there was... Yes, there was really big attendance, and it's lousy weather, and so what else are they going to do?
That's great.
But we did get out in time for the football game.
Priorities. Commissioner Storey?
Just briefly, I'll wrap up on what I heard on Saturday because people asked my input. Are we really being heard? And I said, yes. The process is already started. They've made a list. The people who signed in with their emails, support it all. That will be submitted by Commissioner White. And I think in the end, when we have a project manager, they'll go over what needs to be done, and the other things can fall away. They're not interested in being a township. They want to have a nice hall for their community, and how we work together with them on upkeeping and all that will come in the future. So that's it in a nutshell. I'll go on with an event that I attended yesterday at Grand Portage, and I attended the event as a member of St. John's Church. Many, many years ago, in honor of thanking bishops in our diocese, in our Duluth Diocese, headdresses were given to the bishops. And over the years, the bishops passed away, and the headdresses became part of a family then who had originally given the headdresses to the bishops. And so the archivist in Duluth, over the last three or four years, have been researching how they can return the headdresses to Grand Portage. And so with a pipe ceremony yesterday, two of the three have been returned to Grand Portage. And it was a really nice ceremony, and the bishop came. Pastor Tim from St. John's Church was there, and then a couple of folks from the church in Grand Portage, too, plus members of the Grand Portage Council. So it was a kind of a nice returning to the original place where they had been put together and honored the bishops at that time. So they have one more headdress to work on, and the archivist is... What she wants to do is, you know, have a family background so that the Portage tribe knows who has the headdress and how it was preserved and all of that, and then that will be the final one that will be returning in the future. So it was a very moving ceremony.
Well, thank you so much for attending and for sharing the information. That was really important, really important. The only thing I can think of, because I was at the Planning Commission, and we've already dealt with those items, but we had our community leadership group meet last Thursday, and we got some homework. And I thought it was really nice that I didn't have to give the homework out. Someone else did. And what we're working on is a statement of purpose. We realize that that community leadership group does not have a mission statement in place, and so everybody has been asked to kind of put their ideas together and submit those. And then what we will be doing next time we meet is reviewing those and refining it so that we get that out, and then we want to expand our membership. So we'll be talking about what other people should be included in that community leadership group who currently aren't attending regularly.
And to that end, it's like, how do you define leadership? Is it the taxing authority, or is it the policymaking groups? Because there was a county employee there, Andrea was there, and she always has incredible information to share, but is she part of a joint power?
So that is an important distinction. This community leadership is not a joint powers. And it says on our website, AKA joint powers, but we don't have any. It needs to be scratched off or eliminated. Joint powers are formal agreements, legal agreements that we have, for example, with the city of Grand Marais. But this is a group of people within our community that would like to address issues and concerns and problems. It has no legal authority.
So it has changed over time and has expanded, and it's... But I did like... Well, I'll put this in writing, James, but the fact that there was no one from either school there, because it was their regular school board thing, is really not a good thing.
Yeah. And that happened, I did talk to Superintendent Lindholm, and he let us know in advance. They had changed the date of their school board meeting because of the winter break. And so it was an anomaly that had occurred on that Thursday.
Chris and Dan usually do attend that meeting.
Yeah. All right. Any other Commissioner updates?
No, but I do have a question. I mean, I need clarification from the attorney about do I have the... As a commissioner, can I ask questions of the consultants? I just wanted to know. It's like a jumping rank, but I just wanted to know, and I wanted to know way back months ago, questions, and have asked repeatedly, and I just want to know. That's all I want to know. But being told that I don't have the right to speak to the principals, and that is what our administrator does. So...
Madam Chair? I can certainly address that to an extent. It's not a legal... We're not talking about what your legal right is or not. We're talking about what is the appropriate role of the county commissioners in a county administrator form of government, in which you are not directly supervising any staff, and you have essentially an executive director or a CEO who's responsible for all the matters of business. So your role as a county commissioner is in policy and governance, and then not in the day-to-day operations of the county government. I have more to say, which is if... I think the way it would work best, and certainly we should hear from James if he has different opinions, or the county chair, is that you make inquiries of the contractor together, so you're both getting the same information. Because James is kind of, he's going to be your subject matter expert for the county and should be hearing the same information you're hearing, so that you both have the same... You know, he should have at least the level of knowledge that you do, and not less than. Does that make sense?
Yes, and it works both ways. I mean, that was my... And I just wanted, I just...
Yeah.
What are you going to do? How did... I mean, as I explained already, I don't need to repeat that.
So Commissioner, if I could, what I would suggest is it might be useful, either at the January or February committee of the whole meeting, to have CRBPS do a presentation.
Oh, my Lord, yes.
And prior to that, if you all could provide questions that you want answered, that would help them prepare for that meeting. And that way, we are... I think it is the county attorney's right. It's really vitally important that all the commissioners be hearing the same information, and for us all to have a common base of knowledge. And so, you know, if you feel, and I try to be responsive, but clearly I have failed in some respect. So if you are still needing information, I would say that's probably the best way for us to address that.
So the initial, we were all given their business cards, and they said, if you have a question. And my question was, since once we started looking at what they gave to us, there were all sorts of questions, and of course, they would be the only ones with the answers. They would be. And so what would it cost to get them to come up and go east end, west end, Gunflint Trail, Grand Portage, two days, whirlwind, what would it cost? And that was the reason for my initial phone call, to get them here, so everyone would... No, not. I don't need to be the keeper of secret information. I just, they have the answers, and I just, and I understand national codes, building codes, I understand all of that, but how, we don't have enough details in the reports. And so that's all. That's it.
The other reason why it would be a bad idea for commissioners to be calling the consultant individually is because you saw the rates that they charge us, right? $200 bucks an hour. So if you make a phone call, and then Commissioner Hawkins makes a phone call, and Commissioner Sullivan makes a phone call, and suddenly I'm getting an invoice for like $2,000 of expenses that I didn't even know were happening, that's not a good way to manage that process.
Right. But the initial request was to ask them, for them, how much would it cost us to get them all to... Or one, just one. One of them must have all the answers, and I don't know what that would cost. But if they're showing up now, great. I'll start the list.
Other questions or concerns? Any other items? So this is our last meeting. We have a number of other meetings coming up, believe it or not, before the new year, and then several that are listed coming up in early January. And we have our sales tax comparison for correspondence. And with that is their motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. Is there support? Thank you, Commissioner White. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Have a happy holiday.